This committee meeting to order. Uh, we have two items on the agenda tonight uh for the committee meeting. One is a discussion of um a bike share program and in particular of Zaxter as a, as a vendor. Uh, and then the second aspect of our committee meeting will be a welcome and kind of explanation of a uh some guests we have with us in the audience tonight, but we'll be working with the city of Conway over the next eight months or so uh from the Clinton uh School of Public Service and I'll let them explain uh how that got started and what they're going to be doing and I think you'll find it's gonna be something that's kinda just gonna tell an interesting story and presents a unique opportunity to us as a city. So I'll let them, let them start, but they're batting number two on the order tonight. Batting first is a, the Zaxter Bike Share Program and we're not making any hard decisions tonight, but I'm, we're gonna be trying to ask you, kind of explain what it is and then ask you for direction about moving forward. Perhaps you've seen, uh, if you've visited large cities, uh, you've seen bike share programs, which is in public places, on squares, on extended sidewalks, um, uh, places like that, near bus stations or transit stops. You've seen an array of bicycles all locked into quarters and you can go up to a kiosk and pay and rent that bike and tour around these cities, usually urban cities. Uh, and you can tell that there's a lot of infrastructure investment in those. You can go to DC for National League of Cities and along every transit stop, you'll see twenty bikes or so aligned, aligned out there and you can, you can see the infrastructure costs putting into the kiosk to use your credit card and rent the bikes and it, they're becoming very popular. They're also becoming popular in college towns and particularly uh colleges because they do offer an easy round the clock way for college students who are stuck on campus without a car, as many college students, you know, are, particularly in urban areas, but also as almost all international students are. So it provides a good way for them to, if they don't, if they didn't get a free bike from the bike library through the school and it's ten o'clock at night and they need something at the store, they can check out a bike and drive down. And so frequently we're seeing uh these applications of bike share programs on college campuses run alongside bike libraries, which are the free bikes that you can rent, you know, check out from an open office during business hours. Okay, so they, they work hand in hand in that sense. Uh, they are looked at as cities as amenities for their citizens. They're used recreationally, they're used utilitarian wise for people who don't have bikes to go to the store. Um, so they have a variety of different uses. Uh, I've been on the phone with a, with um the folks in Fort Collins, Colorado. I don't know, Shelley, you and Wes, I know we rode together back to the airport, uh, my buddy and others, Annie, did you go to Fort Collins?
Yeah.
Uh, they have just put in a bike share program with Colorado State University. Um, and it's pretty wildly successful up there, cause you saw that that was a very bike oriented community.
Yeah.
Uh, they used Zaxter. I have a friend on city council in Boise, Idaho. They went with another competitive company called Social Bicycles. Uh, one is a turnkey rental facility, Zaxter, and actually Peter Mel was the one who put us, put me on Zaxter. Uh, Social Bicycles is a, is a, a where you purchase the bike and then you use them for service and they have, they are supported and what we're kind of focused in on is not the capital intensive um installments to where you pay with the credit card at each kiosk. The, the, the benefits of a company like Zaxter or Social Bicycles is that it's a smart bike rather than a smart installation. And if the, the program is app based for smartphones and iPads, you can get the same uh ability to, to rent these bikes on a desktop or you can actually set up an office to go to uh in your city hall or chamber of commerce, so you can actually rent it physically. But for anybody who just walks up and wants to use it, it's app based. They give you a, you, you get the app, download the app, it's free, you get the code for that bike number that you're wanting to ride and it opens up the lock and then you hop on the bike and you ride it as long as you want to, as far as you want to. You don't have to lock it back on a station, you can lock it to a pole or a tree or a bike stand or some other fashion and then drive it back and drop it off when you want to. You know, there's, um, there's a lot of different ways to do that. Uh, you know, there's issues associated with that from, you know, stealing them to forgetting to take them back, but all those can be worked out and have been worked out in these other cities, but that, that's the way it works. The smart app, smart bike makes that, that uh placement of a station a lot less expensive and it makes it mobile. It doesn't require power all of a sudden, it just requires the signs to be moved and the bike racks to be moved. So we're looking at that as a cheap introduction, introduction fashion. Uh, when people rent these bikes, it's usually if you're a member, it's free for the first thirty minutes, you can see on the signs if you go visit other places, and then it's something like four dollars an hour, five dollars an hour in different places. Other places, if you saw on your materials, um, it's eight fifty an hour in Buffalo, New York, that kind of thing. We tend to think that you would wanna encourage usership by renting uh the bike as, as cheap as possible. Uh, if you go with a company called Zaxter and the very last page of your packet shows you a quick comparison, Zaxter, the rental agency, would rent you bikes for eighteen hundred dollars a year for bikes and they would take care of the rebalancing, which means moving bikes from where you have too many, they've been ridden there to where you don't have enough, they've been ridden away from there, so you would rebalance them. But they would also contract with a, with a, a person, a, a business, somebody in the area to run bicycle maintenance, so it's turnkey in essence. The other, the one uh on the, on the bottom, uh below the second green bar is Social Bicycles and it would sell you the bikes. And in the long run, that might be better, but if you look down at the pricing, there's a couple of things. Number one, you can rent as, as few bikes as you wanted to, but with the bike, um, Social Bicycles, you'd have to buy a minimum of fifty bikes. And then also depending on who maintains it, the cost can vary significantly. So if you just look at the fifty bike option for the Zaxter, that option number two, or the Social Bicycle options, you can see it's comparable if we pick up a lot of maintenance cost, but it's wildly not comparable over the three year life I've shown you here if they pay it. Whereas if we go with um rental bikes, it's a lot more bearable. What I would suggest is if we got into the Social Bike Share Program, then we would have certain number of bikes that we would put on, put in places where users that would come to the city or city citizens would be likely to use them. We would put them in downtown, we would put them in our parks, we would put them in our trails. That's where we, our users would use them. But I also think that we could open up the possibility of phasing into the colleges. So if UCA wanted to add a certain number of bikes for their students, that could be a phase two, or Hendrix could be a phase three and they could come on or not if they want to, then they would put bike stations and have bikes available conveniently on their campuses. Now, we can either do that together as one big plan, or we could launch off a pilot program like Carmel, Indiana did, starting with twenty-two bikes and in multiple phases they've moved up to sixty-four bicycles because of the success of the program as they've widened it out. Okay? Now, the revenue off of these bikes as you rent them, most of which would come back, would, would come back to the city of Conway. There would be a certain portion of that for providing software services, for providing the, the, the in, the, the constant um app available, availability for our facilities. All of that would, they would charge a little fee for, but generally they say, the, the people we've talked to say they would, we would get back between ninety-one and ninety-three percent revenue that comes in to the use of the program. You can also sell sponsorships on this program and if you go to these other cities, you can see that insurance companies, health insurance companies are frequently a sponsor of the whole program in DC or St. Paul or wherever, or hospital systems can be sponsors of those programs. And so we would wanna go out and flesh out the possibilities of corporate sponsorship for this. Uh, so while you're looking at the absolute outlay of revenue here, that say renting twenty bikes out over a three year contract like Zaxter would do, would be thirty-six thousand dollars a year, a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the three year contract, that's not counting any offsetting sponsorship revenue, nor is that counting any user revenue. So that would be an, an, a total all-in number without any counterbalancing revenue. So we think, um, as a matter of fact, uh, the, the representative from Jaxter, Zaxter came in to the city a few weeks ago, he was going to meet with the folks in Little Rock and, and actually seeing the program and how easy it is to get into, I'm surprised that some combination of Little Rock, North Little Rock and Palasque County hasn't already provided bike share along the, um, the River Trail and the Big Dam Bridge, to be quite frank. Uh, but they were also going to Fayetteville and talked to a group in Fayetteville. We think that in support of bicycling efforts in the city of Conway, in support of our um League of American Bicyclists, um, bike friendly city designation, we think and, and um the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board thinks, this would be a good portion of what we could do and it's certainly at a hundred thousand dollars for Zaxter, spread over three years, a very achievable option if we determine that is something we would like to get into.
But how would we pay for it? Out of what funding?
This would be a park funding program, so you'd take it out of AMP funds, cities portion of AMP funds.
So I love the idea and being, so in New York City, Citibank underwrites the majority of the bikes there, like every one of the bike share programs there is, I mean, they're just, they're just called City Bikes and they've got the Citibank logo. So I think corporate sponsorship would be something that would be my number one focus. Like I, that would be my first choice is to go out there. I mean, we have a lot of banks, I mean, Hill Regions has Green Bikes as their logo, right? So, I mean, if there's a bunch of green bikes out there that with their name on it, people are using back and forth, I think that's, you know, easy marketing stuff for those guys. So I think corporate sponsorship would be the first place we should visit to see this. I, I, I don't think it'd be very difficult for us to get a corporate sponsor to sponsor twenty-five or fifty bikes to start out with and uh maybe Eric will do all the work on them for free, right?
The big one I asked with you, I doubt we'll have full participation, a hundred percent participation.
Agreed.
Sponsorships.
Agreed.
I think we would get, you know, quite a bit offset, but I don't think someone would underwrite the whole program.
I don't think so and I, I mean, Citibank obviously doesn't underwrite every, I mean, I don't know, there's probably thousands upon thousands in Manhattan, but there, I'm just saying that there's, we have a lot of corporate sponsors here that would be willing to, to do that. I mean, two hospitals right now competing for it.
We, we, we've made note of that, the two competing hospitals.
Yeah.
Uh, so we do think there's an opportunity there to do that and we would like to get into explore that option.
Right.
And another aspect of it is.
Grand nature.
Is getting in line for, do, do we wait for the colleges to join us or do we go out first phase and then do the sponsorships follow second or third phases or do they, do we have multiple sponsors? So there's some decision points along the way.
Right.
So.
Well, and I, I don't, Peter, you may know better than I do how many bicycles UCA has that they allow the students to use for free.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't know that UCA, I, I can't speak on behalf of UCA, but.
There was a concern, yeah, and if anybody wants to speak, you can come up to the microphone, but I was gonna let, let um, let this visit, that there has been some concerns, how much need is actually there on UCA's campus.
Mm-hmm.
I would say there's probably more than some of the administrators realize, so.
UCA has about thirty or more bikes and they are consistently completely checked out.
Checked out.
So, th- those are more recreational bikes, but students use them to get groceries and whatnot as well.
And all these bike share bikes have the baskets and we can actually get them that are cargo loaded, so there's a variety of bikes.
But there's two other colleges, so, I mean, doesn't have to.
Three technically, right?
And, and could we expand, like after year one, would they, as part of the contract, allow us, if we started with, you know, maybe a modest and start with twenty bikes or whatever, the first proposal, and then year two we looked, oh wow, we've got a big increase, so let's, yeah.
Case studies tend to indicate that the success of the first year. Case studies tend to indicate that the success of the first year or so, first phase is quickly replicated in second phases. And you can imagine, it's kind of a harebrained idea in one sense for people who are not familiar with these bike share programs. It's like, wha, wha, what are we investing in? So you can imagine the little trepidation about moving into a new program like this, you know, in a big way.
They can see it in action.
But once they see it in action, it's easy to replicate the first phase and future phases. So. What's your direction? Do you think this is something we can move forward into? Do you want to consider it as a, us launching off into a first phase, looking at sponsorships before we launch? Do you want us to consider, do you want to go off with the colleges and then again, wait for them to make decisions to join us? Because we have made some initial conversations, you had some initial conversations with colleges. And there's some interest, but there's no burning passion yet to do this.
Is there a burning need or necessity to do it on our?
On our part?
Mm-hmm.
We have been in existence for a hundred and forty-one years. We've not needed it yet. But is the opportunity there? I think it is.
Does anybody know who, um, who, you know, has the, has the bikes at UCA? I mean, is it, what company are they contracting with, you know?
It's, and perhaps Eric can speak to this. They are separate bikes. It's kind of a catch-all. I don't know if they've got, they, they have some standardized bikes, don't they? That are all painted purple and.
They, the standardized bike system didn't work. They're not using that any longer. Were you asking what kind of bikes they have?
What, do they have a company they contract with, like this would be?
They have a staff at the Copa Center there that checks in the bikes and does light maintenance.
It's run by UCA.
UCA staff.
Didn't it, they get the bikes from like people that just leave the bikes there during the summer or something?
Well, they have those too, but that didn't work very well either.
Okay.
Just because they're crummy bikes and they're, they're just trash. So they, they actually purchased about thirty bikes from us a year or so ago. And then those were so popular, they came back and bought more. And then they have a staff of two or three students that are always there that check in bikes, who do maintenance on the bikes, that are, you know, checking over the bikes when they get checked back in. And occasionally, there's something that needs repaired that they'll bring them over to the ride and get them repaired.
Maybe I don't understand enough about this, Eric, but what keeps those bicycles from riding themselves off?
They, uh, they take a very close watch on the bikes. They check them out like you would check out a library book.
They have their student ID, and so they know who's got it.
So it's credit card or it's something that's got your identification on it?
If the bike doesn't come back, you don't get grades, you don't graduate.
You don't get transcripts.
I got you. Okay, okay, okay.
All those fun things.
Okay, all right. I figured there was a way to check it, I just didn't know what it was.
I mean, you have to have a, an ID, a bear card to check them out.
It's, it's, it's kind of similar to, you know, Zaxter, I, I think, kind of in that bike share kind of mentality. And it's wildly popular at UCA.
I saw some Saturday night in Fort Worth, when I was there. There was a rack of bicycles right across the street from campus on one of the corners of TCU's campus. And I knew immediately what they were.
And every major school has bike library programs or similar to what we've seen at UCA and Hendrix. It's just common.
So, so we would, we would check these bikes out the same way UCA does in regard? I mean, we don't have student IDs. Is it through a credit card? Is it, you know?
It's, it's through an app.
Well, I'm talking about the city if we did it. How would they be checked out through?
We would do it with an app.
And it would unlock it?
You would go up to the sidewalk, just like Andy was talking about. You would walk up to a bike, you would read the number on the sign, you know, or, or get the app from, you know, pick up the app. It would tell you how to do that, and then you would access the app, you know, this bicycle number in this city. And it would give you the code to unlock that bike.
And charge your credit card.
You'd put in your credit card and you'd charge credit card or PayPal or whatever. So that's how you do it. So you'd do it all yourself on the street.
And you can turn it in at another location, don't you?
And then you would sign out there. And they are GPS, you know, located, so if it's missing, we can go find it. Or actually, they would probably contract with somebody like the Ride, and they would go find it and maintain it and, so. That kind of thing. That's how it works. So direction, what, what do you think? Which way should we?
I think we should do a phase one and see how it goes.
I agree.
Just operate it yourself?
Yeah, and I think it, it could lead to expansion and include the, the two colleges and the university and, and generate corporate sponsorship if people see it.
And actually go out for sponsorship and give them. Give them an option of expanding the sponsorship into the next phase?
How do they get credit for the sponsorship?
They would get.
Be on the bikes.
Or on the stations, you know, there's, there's different ways to do it. And Zaxter would help us actually going about that.
How much they give?
So, you know, some, some groups do smaller, divide the sponsorships up in smaller fashions. Others have an overarching sponsor, sponsors the whole program, completely or partially. And you could possibly have station sponsors.
Make sure they have comfortable seats.
I think they have something like those tractor-type seats with padding. Not those little banana seats.
You can probably get a lot of the corporations that maybe have a lot of people to sponsor their own station with their name on it or whatever.
And that's the other option is the phases don't have to be twenty bikes. They could be a five-bike expansion.
Yeah.
So you could imagine it on, you know, Metis Technology Park having a station. Because there's bike lanes practically all the way out there, particularly once we get a pedestrian bridge over Devor Drive and the trail extended down Stone Dam Creek. That becomes a very, very possible.
Taking it out of that valley.
What, what are the charges?
How much per hour that you? You can rent it for the day. You could actually become a monthly member or an annual member. So you can just check it out and go, and it's already covered. So there's different ways and different packages of getting it.
I mean, is it a proxy or do we, do we set that?
We would have the right to set that to some degree, to how much revenue we would want to attempt to get or forego by setting them real low.
And a lot of them are by the hour, so, you know, if you return them back within the hour, then, you know, they're still, you know, yeah.
I think at DC it was like eight bucks for half a day, or twelve dollars, somewhere, somewhere in there. It wasn't incredibly expensive.
One cab ride?
Uh, less than that, probably.
Yeah. So. That sound, before I launch off on this journey, we can put together sponsorships and, you know, packages and everything. But are hearing sponsorships, seeing us going alone for a pilot phase?
I, I, I think we might ought to talk to some colleges and universities.
I have.
First phase. I'm talking about first phase. I'm talking about because, and, and I look different than most of y'all do, have more white hair. So I don't see a lot of people that I run around with jumping on a bike and riding down to Kings or something like that and then coming back.
I don't think someone will get in their car to go to a bike share station to catch a bike to go somewhere.
I'm, I'm, then I'm.
It's more recreational at our age.
Okay, then I'm a little confused at who's our market.
Ours would be recreational and tourist.
Okay, okay.
People who don't necessarily want to go buy a bike are investing in one, but like the idea of going out and riding on our beautiful new trails.
And, and I know it's got to be popular because I see them in other places. So I'm not arguing against this at any, by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just trying to figure out who the market is so we can put those bikes in the right places.
That's going to be critical. And I think that, you know, it wouldn't behoove us to put them in places that are, that are not going to be, or the actual users aren't going to be. And I think realistically, at this stage, it's to an degree tourist. And that's not a whole lot, but guests in our downtown, for example, who might want to finish a meal and, but not ready to go home yet. And so they would hop a bike and tour through, you know, Conway or go visit the campuses. And all those become in striking distance when you're on a bike, but they're too far to walk to.
And, and what I heard you say is that there are students that might need to go to a grocery store. So maybe like a Kroger or a Walmart market or a different.
Put the bikes where they live.
Where they live.
You put the bikes closer to where they live so they can go to their destination.
Okay.
Utilitarian-wise.
But then when they get there, here, here's my point. When they get there and they go into the store, where do they leave their bike so when they come out?
Because they can lock it to anything you would lock a normal bike to, because the bikes come with their own lock.
Okay, okay, okay. See, I've learned something.
That's where the places in DC or other major cities that have the smart stations, you can't do that.
Okay.
There might be some vendors that now do that, but that was one of the big drawbacks.
I got you.
Whereas these smart bikes come with the lock that you can lock it to a regular bike ride.
Okay.
You said these bikes have GPS. Does it have any way, not just of tracking, but keeping history? That might help you know of where.
Where it's going and.
Hey, this station's not getting used, where are they being ridden?
I think that'd be a great idea.
Exactly how they come back to us and recommend they relocate stations. And because of the flexibility of stations and the cheap, you know, non-capital intensive, uh, cost of the stations, they can be up and relocated.
Easier to move, right.
Easily.
Does this cut in, Eric, Eric, does this cut into your business or does this supplement your business or?
I don't think, I think that this is not a, I mean, no one's going to spend, you know, eight hundred dollars a year renting a Zaxter bike. I wouldn't think. You know, they might do it for a month or so and think, I really like this.
And then they might come see.
I see it as a great, for lack of a, maybe this is an attackful way to put it, but like an entry drug, kind of a, you know, see if I really like this.
Let's just call it an entry.
Yeah.
Good entry, yeah.
Just kind of an entry way for people to, to try a quality bicycle and see how fun it is to ride one, so.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Cool.
And these are, these are pretty sturdy bikes, what they say.
Can I take us just in a briefly, in, into a little different direction? Because we talked a lot about recreation and, and people who use it. But I think I'd like to see, is there a way for us, for people who have no transportation, to have something that's more affordable and available? You know, we've talked about people who live in homeless shelters or things like that, where we could make it as part of our transportation so people can get to work or do, you know. I don't know how we would do that and how we would pay for it, but I'd like to see us at least try to figure that part out. Or to have somebody sponsor a, a station worth somewhere appropriate.
But that would have to be free access.
Right, but it would be free access for the people.
Well, we could do it, we could do it. I mean, if we're willing to absorb the whole cost of the system, we could probably do that.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll have to get with Zaxter and talk about that.
Or some, some component, some complement of them.
Or we could do it on a, on a pay basis with an agency.
Correct. Something like that, or, yeah. Because people talk about, you know, cycling is, is a wonderful exercise, which it is, but it's also, for some people, their primary mode of transportation. Because they don't own cars, they don't own.
They have a bike library like Hendrix, like UCA does.
Small, small in UCA's, right? It's only like ten, fifteen maybe? Yeah.
Mr. Bruce?
Uh, I keep the membership rolls for Conway Adams for bicycling. And we have a lot of retirees that belong to cab, but they not only just belong, when we go on our monthly rides, the last Sunday of each month, we often have older people.
And you've invited me before, and I, and I've not taken you up on that, and that's my fault.
And my hair is pretty white.
I understand.
And if you could, if you could rent a bike for eight bucks.
She rides regularly. I'd mention a couple of other things too. The national surveys and in my own experience here in Conway, a lot of people say they'd like to ride bicycles. And they say that they don't because they don't feel safe or they don't have a bicycle. And I think it would give a good opportunity for those people to try out a bike and see if they like to ride it. And the other thing I would mention is that when we build infrastructure, and this has been true nationwide, people use it. And I would cite Tucker Creek Trail as an example.
Two very good points, and I think that's exactly right. Now that we have a, you know, for a beginning cyclist, not for you guys, but for a beginning cyclist who might be interested in entering the bicycling world, we've got a, we've got a place now that they can rent a bike and try it out and see how much they like it. To see how much they would be willing to spend towards purchase of a bike by renting a facility, renting a bike at our, at our Tucker Creek Bike, Bike Trail.
And this is something that we could, we could monitor, and if it doesn't work out, you know, after three years?
That's the other good thing about renting rather than purchasing.
That's true.
So. But with the turnkey model, if you bought the bikes, Steve would not be a happy camper. But if we rented the bikes and they provide the turnkey service to them through a contract between Zaxter and, you know, some local party, then there would be very little for us. We might help with the rebalancing, but that's simple. Mr. Rick?
If you give me thirty seconds, I just want to address something. Shelley, actually, your husband, go to me to come up here. But, you know, when we talk about low income, um, Cab sponsors a bike share and repair program in conjunction with UCA that both Eric and I are heavily involved in, and Jim and I know Peter both have helped in, you know. And so to get the low income, we will supply bikes, and we actually work with Coho to do that, the City of Hope Outreach. You know, so we, we are addressing that. It's on a low-scale effort. We do give bikes away. We even have given bikes away to students that come there that we, here a professor will say, hey, I've got this exchange student, it's going to be here for six months, have you got a bike for him? So that, that's successful on a very low-key basis, but we're, we're trying to address that need. And, and it's really no cost to the city and very little cost to the cab. You know, it's almost self-sufficient because we do take donations, and people have been very gracious on there. And we have repeat customers, you know, low-income customers, that that is their transportation. So, you know, feel free to share the word on that, you know, but hey, if you know of somebody or, you know.
That's, that's where we need to better, do a better job is sharing those opportunities out there. And if we do this, we would have to be in that business as well, to getting the word out.
Yep.
So that's good.
Thank you.
Very good. So wrapping up this portion of the committee meeting, I'm hearing direction. Let's proceed. Are you okay with the first phase?
Absolutely, yeah.
With tendrils out to the various colleges?
Just to see.
Just to see, and if they want to just take a wait-and-see approach, then we're running a pilot for them. So good with everybody? Certainly go out there and start talking sponsorships.
Okay.
Okay? And I just picked the number twenty because it was round versus nineteen or eighteen or seventeen or twenty-one or whatever. So, but I, I figured if we're going to have them in multiple locations, two ends of a bike trail or a midpoint, we're going to need, you know, at least four at each station. So that's where I was coming up with around twenty. So you would have some.
Any kids bikes at all, or are they all adult?
Actually, I don't know about kids bikes. It's, I do know that, that, um, it looks like they're all, don't have that top bar, whatever you call that, the male bikes. Another male bike. Yes, a universal bike. Thank you. I was knowing, I knew there was a much better word for it. The male bar. Just didn't know what it was. That's a good question, but in, in the actual material on Zaxter itself, it has the hand pedal bikes. It has the tandem side-by-sides. It has tricycle bikes. It has tricycle cargo bikes.
That's what I need. That's what I need.
It has a variety outside of the just standard bike. Pardon? Well, a tandem bike is a.
But it's, but it was side-by-side.
Yeah, it has a lot of togetherness with a tandem bike.
I don't think I've ever seen a side-by-side.
It has a recumbent triangles, tricycles, so, you know, Peter might like it when he gets, you know, owing people.
That's what he said.
Anyway, very good. I've got my marching orders. We've got some direction. Let's go on and talk about the Clint School of Public Service and what service they'll be providing the city of Conway. So, Mr. Grummer, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Townsend. And thank you, Council, for letting us speak to you this evening. So back in two thousand fourteen, a citizen came to the city of Conway with a concern. And out of that concern, we looked into it, we investigated. We actually reached out and met with our city attorney. We met with the district court judges and did our, our due diligence. And we came to find that there was an issue, that it was an actual concern that we needed to address. So with that, we, we met with Mayor Townsend, and I want to thank you, Mayor Townsend. So with that, we, we met with Mayor Townsend, and I want to thank you, Mayor Townsend, for, uh, giving us the ability to, to look into this and to, to dive into it.
I'm always glad to let somebody else do a good job.
Exactly. And, uh, so tonight I'd like to, uh, first off, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. James Brownlee, who was a citizen who stepped forward and presented this to us, if you wouldn't mind, um, James Brownlee. So here's the, here's the concern that he presented. Uh, there are citizens in the city who, for some reason, may have a fine that has been raised, has been against them, whether it's a seatbelt fine, a traffic violation, or some type of, uh, a low level misdemeanor crime, whatever it may be. Even a, 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 uh, a teacher or just a, anybody that could have had a parking ticket. Uh, for some reason, they don't pay that ticket, and then they end up having a warrant for their arrest. They could get arrested, go to jail, well, for our low income citizens, if they get arrested and go to jail, then they could lose their job and it creates a cycle of poverty that, um, somebody says is, they call the, the toilet bowl effect. They get into this cycle and they can't get out of it. So, it doesn't fall for everybody, but we looked into it and apparently it's a huge problem. And, uh, so with that, uh, that was in two thousand fourteen, we started our conversations with the city in two thousand fifteen, and it's been ongoing, this year in two thousand sixteen, we actually applied to the Public School of Public, the Public, the Clinton School of Public Service, I'm sorry.
You've probably said that ten times.
Because it's a lot, to their practical program, allowing their students to come to the city and, uh, assist the city in looking into this program. Now, what we have discussed was not, not another government agency or another government program, but a separate program that's outside the city, possibly a nonprofit or, uh, some type of service that could be a safe haven outside of our processes, outside of the court and outside of our police, uh, policing, so that citizens feel comfortable to walk in who may have a warrant that wouldn't go to the, to, to court and, um, have it served without having to go to jail. And then plug them into services which in itself, um, could solve a lot of the issues, uh, number one overcrowding at the jail system as well as many other issues that have come out. So I'm not going to elaborate too much, but that kind of gives you the, uh, the gist of it, and I'll just share this before, I'd like to let the students step up real quickly and introduce themselves and let, let, let you know a little bit about what they experienced today, but about a month ago, I ran into a gentleman, a homeless gentleman, and I was talking to him and I was asking him, uh, so what happened? And he told me his story. He was working for a wrecker service, and he had a call, he had to come from Greenbrier and he had to go all the way to Sherwood, and he was in a hurry to get there, well, in Conway, as he was passing through Conway, he got pulled over for speeding. Now, the officer was very nice, he didn't give him a speeding ticket, now this gentleman actually had a wrecker. Uh, the officer didn't give him a speeding ticket, but he gave him a seatbelt ticket. Well, for whatever reason, he didn't pay his ticket. Sometime later, he got pulled over, got sent to jail. This young man lost his job, got out of jail, ended up being homeless for a year, getting addicted to meth and other drugs, and the cycle started, and he's still homeless today. So, a seatbelt ticket, but he had a good paying job. But now that he's homeless, how hard is it gonna be for him to get back into the, to housing? And so these are the, these are the systemic issues that we have to deal with on a local level and how it's impacting us. So with that, I'd like to share with you, introduce to you the students from the Clinton School of Public Service. We're excited that they're here, and we're excited they're going to, uh, just give us some direction. And out of this, our hope is that we can come to City Council with some, uh, some possible solutions to this, potentially with partnerships with some of our nonprofits in town and other organizations.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Grummer.
Hi, y'all. Um, my name's Chelsea Miller and I'm, I'm here with the rest of the Conway team. So I'm originally from North Carolina, this is Megan Bond, she's from, um, Little Rock, um, Brandon Trevino? Brandon, sorry, God. Um, from Greeley, Colorado, Hannah Bond from, um, Seattle, Washington, and Stephen Quazera from Uganda. So we are gonna be, the five of us, the, we are the few and the mighty who are gonna be here in Conway over the next nine months. For those of you who don't know a lot about the Clinton School Program, it's a master's in public service, it's a two-year project, and during our first year, we're sent out as a team into a community in Arkansas that has a real need and we're assigned to help in some way to meet that need. So that kind of started a couple of weeks ago when we had the opportunity to meet Scott, kind of on our turf, and today is our first day on y'all's turf. And so, um, we've been in Conway, um, since bright and early at nine o'clock this morning when we met with the mayor and we've met with so many people, and we have lots of great content to take home with us. But over the next, over the coming months, so basically from now until the end of the semester, which is early December, we'll be doing lots of research, we'll be in the community, getting to know people, coming to events, learning more, hopefully meeting with some of you all to get your thoughts and feelings about, about this issue that, that is, one, incredibly relevant in the national scene, and two, seems to be having a real impact on your, your community here in Conway. From there, we'll be working to, um, we hope to leave you in April when, when we kind of wrap up and have a big kind of ceremony to be, to leave you with a, a tan, both a tangible plan and a better understanding of the current system. I think we today in our twelve-hour day learned a lot that we didn't even know existed, and so we hope to find a way to better educate the community at large about this issue in particular. It's clear to us from everything we've done today that Conway really, really cares about its community, and we're really happy to be here and excited to get to meet with all of you, and, um, we would love to, to learn more. And if you have connections or resources for us outside of the city, you know, we want to learn more about what people are doing and get to know people in this community, so if there are events or activities that we can be a part of, please just let us know. But we're, we're really excited to, to be a part of this community for the next few months.
Very good, thank you, Chelsea. Any questions of Chelsea or in the effort? Well, I'll say that it, it's the initiative, Mr. Brownlee and, and Scott, uh, you know, starting this and this getting picked up by the Clinton School of Public Service was, um, kind of a, a fortunate situation for us. It is also very timely, after the advent of the lawsuit against the City of Sherwood District Court, which involves some circumstances that are different but similar to what, you know, our, our stories are dealing with here. The things that are in play, the things that make small issues into bigger issues are very similar, and the effect on, uh, certain citizens of the city, you know, is, is very similar there too. So it's timely, this is a good chance to possibly create a model program that can be replicated in district courts across the state. So, we, we, we wish you the best, we welcome you to the City of Conway and, and, uh, good luck along the way. I'm sure we'll be dealing with you frequently in the future.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Let's come back in about ten minutes for start of our city council meeting. Thank you again for your attendance, and we'll start our council meeting in about ten minutes.
With a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask Alderwoman Sheila Whitmore to lead us in.
Isby.
Isby.
That was good last month.
It's horrible this one so far. Sheila Isby.
If you'll bow with me. Our gracious Father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. We just ask, Lord, that we continue to seek your wisdom and your guidance as we make decisions that affect this city that you've so graciously blessed us with. And we pray, Lord, that everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight, and we pray, Lord, that you get the glory in everything that we do that relates to this city that you've graciously blessed us with. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, please call the robe. Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
You should have received copies of the August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen minutes of the City Council meeting. Discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion, additions, corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving into our first items of business that come under community development, Mr. Hawkins, I'll turn this over to you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a resolution for the Faulkner County tax collector to place some certified liens on some property that needed our attention to get them cleaned up. And this particular piece of property is at two nine zero four Celia Drive in Conway. Is there an owner or a representative of an owner of the property at two nine zero four Celia Drive in Conway?
Seeing no one, Mr. Hawkins?
We have a resolution to be read for this, Mr. Mayor. It's Resolution R sixteen.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of the resolution. Any discussion? This would be for one hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. If not, all those in favor of placing a lien against this property at twenty-nine oh four Cecilia Drive, or Celia Drive, in the amount of one hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents to repay eventually the city for cleaning up the conditions at that property address, all in favor of that resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds for levy maintenance for the city of Conway, and we have an ordinance to be read for this item. It's Ordinance O sixteen.
One hundred and three.
One zero three.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the three readings and bringing this ordinance forward for action on tonight's agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. The readings are waived. We have the ordinance before us for action tonight.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. Motion and second for adoption. Discussion?
Mr. Zilks.
Mr. Zilks.
Thought I might get off scot-free.
Negative. Negative.
All right. This ordinance is pretty simple. We definitely, the city and the airport, we have a very vested interest in the success of the maintenance and upkeep of the Faulkner County Levy District number one. So what we're gonna do is appropriate an amount, should be around seventy-seven thousand dollars, as written in the ordinance, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars to be appropriated to the Faulkner County Levy District, as our share also going in is Faulkner County and Conway Corporation to give to the Levy District for some maintenance, de-vegetation, getting rid of some things on the levy that can cause structural abnormalities, things that we need to do to keep the levy in good shape. So being that we have a vested interest in that levy staying in good shape, that's what we're doing with up to seventy-five hundred dollars.
Very good. And while we have a vested interest, Conway Corporation has an even greater vested interest. But this is just a little money compared to what we have invested in infrastructure behind it. So this is, this is money well spent, and there's probably gonna be more in the future going towards this, because we all remember some pretty harrowing days earlier this year where water climbed up on that levy, and that was the only thing keeping that water from the millions of dollars investment we as a city had in the airport or Conway Corporation had in the sewer treatment plant, so. Mayor, it's not gonna stop there. The water's not gonna just stop. No, actually, it's not. It would, um, we, we have, it would come up the creeks, and it would extend a lot further than people realize at flood stage. So you're exactly right, Mr. Ledbetter. Anyway, we have a motion and second for this ordinance. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, being an ordinance, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Zilks. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a contract for professional services from Garver related to the Dave Ward pedestrian overpass. And I know we have representatives from Garver, but we also have Mr. Finley Vincent, who is engineer for the city of Conway with us. And Mr. Finley Vincent, would you tell us about how we arrived at Garver doing this project?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we requested, uh, just, the, two thousand sixteen of this year was the first year that I requested qualifications from engineering consultants, just in anticipation of us needing, perhaps needing something like this. A lot of larger cities do that on an annual basis, so I selected the consultant from amongst those submittals. And Garver was clearly the, one of the few with, with the structural experience necessary to perform this work.
Very good. And why don't you go on, Mr. Vincent, and describe a quick, brief synopsis of the project and the services to be provided, and the cost of the project and the services.
Yes, of course. The, uh, the contract is for the design of the pedestrian bridge. I believe we actually spoke about this briefly at the last meeting where I asked for permission to select a consultant. I think it was the last meeting, may have been before that.
I think so, yes.
Okay, forgive me. Anyway, the, the, the contract amount is three hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars. That's a, we'll pay them on an hourly rate, not to exceed that amount. If their contract did exceed that amount, we wouldn't need to come back to you to get the contract extended. But from what I understand from discussions with them, they, they think that's conservative, and they don't expect it to go over that. They're gonna, what they're gonna provide us with is not just design documents, but they're gonna vet some, a few different potential designs, schematic designs for what the bridge would look like, and also do some preliminary hydro, preliminary hydraulics to make sure that the designs would work. And so they'll present those options to me and to the mayor's office, and we'll, we'll select the final option, and then they'll, they'll proceed forward from there to full design plans. And they anticipate being done with the design by the, before the end of next year. We actually hope to be under contract and under construction before the end of next year.
Are there any questions?
With the estimated cost of the project?
Sorry, the estimated cost of the, the, so when the initial grant was applied for, the cost estimate that was arrived at, at that time by White Daters and Associates was, I think, one point, one point seven, one point eight million, somewhere in there, not including engineering, not including the design, which we're paying for here, or the construction inspection, engineering. So, you know, for a nice round number, I would throw at it would be two million.
And this will be how wide?
Uh, do you remember?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen feet.
Thank you.
So it'll be actually a little bit wider than our existing bike trail.
Mm-hmm.
A foot on either side. But it's because, I think it's important that the conceptual approaches to it is, is good, because it is such a, it will be such a signature feature right there at the UCA campus.
Mm-hmm.
So we want it to be attractive, not just pure utilitarian. And then the, the possibilities that that bridge opens up to connect bike net, bike network, bike, bike.
Harley.
Bike networks on the south side of, of Conway, which, south of the geography of the city is south of Dave Ward Drive. And the north half of the city, bicycle networks up there, that provides some connectivity that does not require crossing a major four-lane road, high-traffic four-lane road on a, on a flashing, you know, signal. So this is gonna be a wonderful benefit, both to the city but to UCA students as well.
And do I remember that UCA is participating with us?
UCA is participating. They have agreed to kick in three hundred thousand dollars. We have received five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds from other sources with another grant application into the state this year.
Good. Thank you very much.
And that grant application that's currently pending is, has a maximum amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Is it four or five? Maybe five. We got four last year.
Maybe five, yeah.
I think it's five is the maximum. We got four last year. I'm hopeful that we'll get a similar number again this year. And I also mentioned that it's, it's been called the Dave Ward Drive Pedestrian Overpass since its inception, but the, uh, it's, it's gonna be fully bicycle-friendly. The grades and approaches are gonna be five percent, which is the same as the Big Dan Bridge, and, and a healthy cyclist could make that with no trouble. It's not as tall as the Big Dan Bridge.
I make a motion, we are into this contract.
Second.
Motion and second, we enter into this contract. Discussion?
It's a great project, and just as a reminder, you know, it, it's easier to do this right on the front end than it is to try to come back later and fix what we don't do. So let's do this right on the front end.
Absolutely. Definitely a need there. There's definitely. Crossing the day.
Before we use it, is the thing.
And trying to cross there at five-thirty is, man.
It's daunting.
Yeah.
At the best.
Yeah. It's scary.
Yeah. Very good. We have a motion and second. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve the Bicycle Master Plan for the city of Conway, and we have that, it's been presented to us.
Absolutely. I'm gonna ask both Amanda Porter Cole and Todd Ake to stand up. Amanda is the current chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. Todd was the chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board when they initially drafted the Bicycle Master Plan. And it's kind of languished, quite frankly, y'all can both come up, it's okay. On this, it's been presented to us previously, I think about a year ago. We've made some changes to it, some small changes, fleshed out some narrative. But this is a component that's actually looked for when you become a bicy, League of American, American Bicyclist, bicycle-friendly community. There are a number of statements of what we will do. There are a number of statements about what we would wish to do at some point. One of the big issues that we kind of held us up and paused us for such a long time is the funding. What we are asking you to do is to restore the original funding source. If you look on page twenty-three, there's a current funding plan that restores the original funding source created for bicycle, pedestrian, and transit enhancement projects. That was the severance tax monies that we set aside, and they're still operating under that resolution, although we funded them into the street fund last few years under Resolution R oh eight twenty-three, so since two thousand eight, dedicating all those severance tax monies towards alternative transportation like we once did. And that is a, a minimum. You can see historically it's been as low as a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in two thousand nine, up to three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen. It's on track to come in, because production's down, prices down, at something less than a hundred thousand dollars today. But this is monies that's above and beyond what's mandated to us by our complete streets ordinance, which says that if we touch a new road, we have to allow for bicycle facilities, pedestrian facilities, even transit, you know, facilities down the line. And we build a complete street, not just a street for cars. Those projects are gonna be mandated and paid for out of the various pockets of street funds. This is for those projects that are, that are away from those bigger street projects that we'll, we'll address with street, complete streets. This will help give us extra monies to do things to promote bicycle, pedestrian infrastructure in other areas that are much smaller, that just need a smaller investment, that don't need us to do a big street widening project to get to it. So this will restore those monies, but also, if you look at the vision plan, to look at a whole new way, a whole new paradigm shift in the way we think about transportation funding, to get us away from such a car-dependent funding model. But that's in the vision. The current plan is just to restore the existing, what we should be setting aside to, to, to alternate transportation already. That said, there's some various bike routes that are identified, there's bike lane opportunities identified, there's bike trail opportunities identified, with identified funding goals for future trail options. It does set some goals in here for us. Like to configure five centerline miles of bike lanes each year, if possible. We'd like to construct approximately one mile of fully-developed multi-use path each year as a goal. Two and a half miles of what we're gonna call, for lack of a better term, traveler trails, which are packed gravel, packed limestone perhaps, shaving trails that won't necessarily have the lights or the full infrastructure, but if you're going longer distances, that's what they have in other cities. I think Fayetteville has quite a few of those on their, their miles. So it's got a, a variety of things here, but it gives us a roadmap forward in pursuing improvements in our bicycle infrastructure. So Amanda or Todd, I'll invite you to talk about this, and we'll turn it over to the council after, after our statement. And obviously, they're available for questions as we get into this.
Yeah. Obviously, I've been before here, you know, a couple times in the last couple of years talking about this. You know, it is a great passion, obviously, for BPAB and for CAB, you know, kind of, yeah, because for bicycling. You know, one of the things I have experienced in the last month is my daughter just relocated to Fayetteville, and she's teaching up in Springfield, Springdale, excuse me. And so when we've been up there the last couple weekends, we've actually gone up there and biked on the Greenway Trail there. And if you haven't done that, and I know you're not all cycling activists or enthusiasts, but when you see that and you see the infrastructure that's in place in Fayetteville, and then all places north to Bella Vista, you, you know, I was surprised to see what Arkansas would do. I grew up in Wisconsin. Wisconsin has great trails. Next week, my wife and I are traveling there, she's running a marathon, and then we're intentionally going to Ohio to bike the trails there. They have hundreds and thousands a mile, or I wanna say thousands of miles of bike trails.
You did have to mention Ohio.
I gotta mention where the infrastructure is and what I'm gonna experience. You know, but we, we're intentionally taking a week's worth of vacation and doing that. We do that, right? You know, and so we are enthusiasts. But, you know, when Tab talks about the different styles of trails, Wisconsin has a lot of these gravel-crushed limestone trails. They don't all have to be paved, all fully lit trails, right? You know, the people that like to go explore nature and do that, we don't need that, right? We're not, we're not doing this at midnight, right? And this isn't the, the Lycra enthusiast-type crowd. They're not gonna use the trails in that regard. You see some of that in Fayetteville, but the guys that are going and doing a hundred miles, right? They're gonna get off the trail, and they're gonna get on the roads, you know, and, and so we're gonna have those cyclists too. And I, I do it all across the range.
The Greenway's always packed. I've been on it several times, and it's always got so many people.
Right. I mean, and that's, you know, one, one of the things, right, Arkansas has the Bad Rapids being an obese state, right? You know, and we were on Fiftieth this year, thank God, right? But if you're gonna combat that, you have to have the, the means in place and the infrastructure to combat, combat that, makes it easy to get on the trail. And one of the things you'll see even on Tucker Creek Trail, right, it's not all the guys clad in Lycra. You know, I'll see people getting pushed in wheelchairs that are overweight. You know, and you're like, man, this is great. They're getting out and using the city infrastructure for what truly it should be designed for, the full range of, of use. You know, it's not the full range of use. You know, it's not just the CRC runners that are doing, you know, five-minute miles, right? You know, and stuff. And so I think as a city, we owe it to our citizens to invest in this kind of infrastructure, to encourage people to get out, get off the couch, get out of the, in front of the TV and use the facilities and explore our city.
I would just like to add that, I mean, in addition to, and you guys all know this, but I can't help myself from saying it, but in addition to physically getting out there to exercise, the great things about what this funding would do is give us the opportunity to make the connections between the infrastructure that's there right now and that we're going to put in because of complete streets. There's all these gaps. There's all these places that a lot of people don't feel safe getting out there on their bikes. They don't feel safe getting out there on foot to go, to walk to the grocery store or ride their bikes to the grocery store. When I'm in town and have time, I love riding my bike to the grocery store, but there's a mile before me, before my townhouse and the Tucker Creek Trail. And I feel comfortable doing that, but I've been told by a lot of people that they don't feel comfortable doing that in the areas that we have to get to. There's a little spot that needs sidewalk, but there's no, that point isn't going to have construction anytime soon to have that built through the complete streets plan. So this would definitely help alleviate that and just help other people get out in ways that will make them feel more safe to connect the infrastructure that we're working towards building in other ways.
I got a question. What little spot are you talking about? What street are you talking about?
Donaghy in front of The Ride and Sunshine Academy. There's a little corner on the, is that the north side? I don't know how you count that, but on the sunshine side, there's that corner. And there's no, there's no crosswalks anywhere. So you can't safely cross the street to get on the sidewalk over there. And even if you could, there's no, the sidewalk ends and you would have to get back on the other side once you get to Meadow Lake. So it's, I feel comfortable doing it, but most people don't feel comfortable riding their bikes right there that I've talked to.
Perfect example. And they're all over the city, actually.
All over the city. Those little gaps that make it to where families don't feel safe letting their kids ride their bikes to school or down to their friend's house or something like that. And really making sure that we have, we make families feel safe using infrastructure. That's what's going to change Arkansas as not being an obese state, but also, you know, celebrating the fact that we are the natural state and making us a destination in Conway, making us a destination potentially for people like Todd from elsewhere to come on vacation here.
Very good. And I might add that there are the health benefits. There is the utilitarian need for those people who simply can't afford cars.
Yes.
Or can't drive, either at the low end, young end of the spectrum or the old end, or they're just prohibited by, you know, other factors from driving. But it's also an economic development issue. Businesses will not locate their facilities here if they can't get their employees to live here. And quality of life, those aspects that, you know, that Todd mentioned, are important to getting their employees to live here or ensuring in the company selection makers' minds that their employees would. The first question we were asked about Hewlett-Packard locating at the Meadows Technology Park, very first question was, are all these roads, these county lanes leading to the Meadows Technology Park, are they going to be widened to city standards? Yes, they are. The second question was, are they going to have bike lanes? That's how much Hewlett-Packard felt about bike lanes. That was the very second question, because they recognized that their people would want bike lanes. And if they didn't feel like their people could be recruited to live in Conway, Arkansas, they weren't going to locate a facility here. So it does have health benefits. It provides also a lot of recreational benefits and there is a matter of social justice. And there's little gaps all over town that make connectivity, which matters in the bicycling world, that connectivity matters. And that's what makes the whole system come alive.
And I think the only other thing I would like to add is that the more people who get out there on bikes, the safer the community is for everyone. Because just like around the Greenway Trail, the perception has changed. Even in spots where people are not, vehicles are not required to stop, they stop and let bikes have and pedestrians have the right of way. And that just makes the community safer. And that doesn't happen until you have an influx of people on bikes and an influx of people out on foot doing that. And so the more we can make people perceive safety, the more they'll get out there. It's a chicken before the egg kind of scenario, but you have to get the people out there.
Or it's the egg before the chicken.
It's one of the two.
Any questions of this? Because it does put a roadmap out there and set some goals for us. And, you know, there's going to be an annual calling on the carpet, so to speak, of like, what have you done? Let's see a report card, you know, what have you? And I think that's good. If we're going to aim to be a bicycle-friendly community, if we're going to aim to be a progressive community in the state of Arkansas, then we need to set high standards for ourselves. And I think that's what is incorporated into this Bicycle Master Plan.
Who chooses what project you fund first or?
It's the city's money, although they could provide advice and then that's their role. So we could envision they could generate some ideas to the street department and family. And, you know, we could generate ideas and take it to them. So it could be either way.
And some of those are in here, actually, you know, with,
Some of them are, that's right.
To pass and that kind of stuff, so. But, yeah, it's obviously the city's money.
And honestly, if y'all wondered if you saw a gap, like, we need to fix this. That's something that we would both take up. So as a city council member or ward, if something wells up out of a ward meeting, we could both consider that as BPAB and city staff.
And one of the things that we're looking forward to is the survey of streets later this year before next year's budget setting, because included in that is our understanding that there's going to be a survey of all the infrastructure around the streets. So the status of the sidewalks, the status of the bike lanes. And that should also help kind of guide.
Guide investment. Very good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
When I go every year to register my vehicle, I have to pay a fee to do that. And when y'all go to ride your bicycles, you don't have to do that. Would you be willing to participate at some level in the funding of your own operation?
I mean, I think that that starts to, I personally would be happy to, but I think that that starts to put taxes on those who are riding, like, they're riding bicycles because of financial burden or,
I'm not talking about a person that's got a seventy-five-dollar bike. I'm talking about people that have high dollar.
I understand. Jim, can I have you come up to the microphone real quick? Was this, this is?
Ellie Blue in a book called Biconomics. And we gave it to the Woody Cummings Study Committee. It's working on that and I hope they bring some report back on that. But, and this may sound,
We have a copy in the office too, by the way.
But the city would really be better off to pay people to ride bicycles in terms of all of the benefits that come. And you can start with health benefits and how much it costs to pay for people's health. You can talk about the quality of the air and just go right down the line. Even the economic benefits of having more people able to ride to stores in order to shop. There's some evidence that bicyclists actually over time spend more money than people who come in cars. And they don't come as often, but, I'm sorry, they come more frequently. They don't buy as much when they come. And I would encourage you to look at that book and just see what all the benefits are. We often get the question too, why don't bicyclists have to be registered and pay a tag, you know, have a tag and the rest of it? But if you really consider the whole argument, bicycles have so many benefits that we'd be better off subsidizing people rather than to continue. And we do favor the automobile and subsidize it heavily. I mean, just think of all the parking, the free parking. We actually provide free support for people in terms of their private property by having them drive to town and park their cars. What's the rationale for that? Why shouldn't those motors be paying more to park their private property? And we can park a heck of a lot more bicycles in those spaces than we can cars, so.
You're also going to think about wear and tear on the road. Ten people in cars versus ten people on bikes. And there was, we had this question at one of our council, or one of our,
Ward meetings?
Yeah, one of our ward meetings. And there was some articles that someone found that it was, if you, like, connect them to what cars do versus bikes, it was something ridiculous, like, I mean, a bicyclist, if you're going to pay taxes with how much wear and tear you have on the road, it's like a quarter of a penny every hundred miles or something like that. It means something just out of control. So there's really no way to compare the two when it comes to wear and tear on the road. I think that's the first thing, I mean, is wear and tear on the road. If we had fifty percent of people in the town riding bikes versus riding cars, how much longer would our roads last?
Plus, it would be hard to police, I would think. I mean,
Well, another consideration is they do already pay for it. And it's not just those people who have cars. Every residential property except for church properties pays property tax. And one-point-five mils of the property tax they pay goes for city streets. And it doesn't matter if you're a property owner or you're just a renter. You pay it in your rent or you pay it in your property taxes you pay as a homeowner. So that goes for streets. And if that figurative person just owns a bike, then he's paying that one-point-five mils and not him on a car. So he's paying a contribution. And when you compare it to what the actual toll is on the roads or what it costs to deliver infrastructure, it's not much. So I don't think there's much fruit there in that pursuit.
Just thought I'd ask the question.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, everybody's got to pay something sometime.
But, yeah, there's no free lunch and I don't think the bicyclists have it either. So. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the master bike plan.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the master bike plan. Any discussion? Any other discussion?
See, you asked the question. I've hit something for you.
If there's no discussion, all in favor of approving the Bicycle Master Plan for the City of Conway, signify or say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. And let me ask the folks that represent the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. I'll have you all stand up. I know there's some others in there that didn't speak. And Eric's back there. He's been a former member of that group. So we appreciate the effort that y'all make for us every time. And this is certainly a milestone for getting this passed and moving forward. So thank you for your work you do for us very much. Last item under community development, Mr. Hawkins?
Is resolution to endorse Strava Metro as the GPS tracking system of choice of use by the local bicycle and pedestrians for City of Conway. And we have a resolution to be read for this. It is Resolution R-1633?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Sorry.
Thirty-eight. And I'll go on and start this, Mr. Hawkins. I was contacting Wes Terry Cottington.
Yeah, we had that meeting with Terry.
Had the meeting with Terry. And Aaron Knight and I with Mr. Pruitt, we all sat down and visited with him. He'd already made contact with this company. Strava is a phone-based app that allows you to track your, and it's free. And I just downloaded this free today. You can get a premium version of it. But the basic app is free. And apparently, according to reviews, it works wonderfully with iPhones. Not so hot maybe with Android. But it is a leader of GPS tracking apps for smartphones. So if you want to, I think it gives you a choice of bicycling or walking or hiking, whatever. And you can do anything in either version, but it allows you to track your ride and to track, you know, how far you've gone, how quick you've gone, where you've gone. And it gives you feedback for fitness sake and for health benefit sake for your individual fitness program. And they'll do it for me, not really, but a fictional me. They'll do it for Chuck, and that's got a possibility, you know, but they'll do it for some of these guys. And the Strava Metro, what service they offer, is for a relatively small fee based on the number of users in your community. They will aggregate all the data from the individual users together. And then they will anonymize it. So if I'm a single woman, it doesn't tell me where I start my ride from and doesn't tell anybody where they're going, but it tells the general areas. And it doesn't say, you know, male or female or age or anything. But it tells you where people are riding, their bikes are walking. And it begins to give you heat maps. It gives you preferred routes people take versus unpreferred routes. It will tell you, it will give you feedback as a metropolitan area based on the usage of all these individual users themselves feeding the data to us. So we think it's a great tool for us for providing infrastructure, for making sure there's, we can identify those gaps, like, people are trying to get here, but they can't get across this space. Therefore, we should address our monies towards it. We think it's eighteen hundred dollars at the current level of users. I think that's locked in for a couple of years. We think the feedback data would be wonderful. We, along with BPAB, would want to push the app so that we get more users out there using the app and tracking their routes through our system. And we think it'd give us the good feedback. And it's just a year at a time. We can check the value of it versus what we get from that value and stop it at the end of one year or two years. But we think it's worthwhile to invest in to provide us some feedback for purposes of engineering and investment going forward. And that's both for bicycling and for pedestrian's sake. So we encourage you to endorse the Strava Metro and authorize us to go on and enter into an agreement for providing this. What it does, it provides you one year of future data and one year of past data. And then that rolls forward each year, so you can keep a historical record of it. But it allows you to get more immediate feedback.
I think it's important to say we don't have, we have this much data right now.
Right.
Who's riding where besides just going out there and seeing. And there's a lot of people complaining, saying, why are we spending so much money on cycling and roads? And if we can pull this heat map out and show, hey, look what it's getting used, just because you're not there to see it doesn't mean it's not happening.
Right.
So I think that's an important piece of this as well, to know that we have zero data right now.
It not only gives us feedback on where to invest our dollars and our attentions, but it also gives us justification and verification. So that's a good point.
And how do you get this information out to people to have them use that app?
We would push it out on our website. We would push it out on Facebook. They would push it out through their contacts.
Y'all push it out through you.
We'd hopefully get an article in the paper.
Push it out. Push it out.
I think we got, I think we got four or five people to sign up with Strava at our award meeting. Like, we just brought this thing up and people were pulling their phones out right then, like, downloading the app.
That's it.
You got one more?
Mr. Griffin. Bingo.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt this resolution endorsing Strava Metro and authorizing this initial purchase price. Discussion? Strava, S-T-R-A-V-A is what you need. That's the app available on the App Store.
Strava.com too for,
Strava.com. You can go directly to the site. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Very good. Mr. Hawkins, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The next item, under Public Services, is the lipstick on that pig of a city hall we have. we have over there is wearing thin. Um, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the general maintenance, uh, repairs and upkeep of the building. Our fiscal plant maintenance account has a line item dedicated for, um, uh, maintenance of the facilities. We have seen a number of, uh, air conditioning, you know, HVAC, uh, units go out this year in City Hall. We've had, just on, on another issue, we've had a number of leaks this year, particularly the rainy, the rainy August. It was rainy outside, it was rainy inside. Uh, we've had an elevator that needed to be brought up to stay cold. We simply just ran out of money in that account this year. This is to replenish a working balance into that line item, uh, for, um, for the general fund in our budget. So this is an accounting ordinance recognizing the extensive maintenance issues we've had at City Hall.
Move to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings and bring this ordinance forward for action on tonight's agenda. All in favor of waiving the readings?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Move for adoption? I think that passes.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank you for the, uh, waiving the reading vote over there.
Yes, sir. You didn't know what to do with it coming from this side, did you?
We have a motion and second on the ordinance. There will probably need to be, that's not our ultimate City Hall, but it's going to have to be our City Hall for a while. Um, there's probably going to be some relatively large maintenance expense in that building, uh, maybe as early as this next budget year. So just give you a heads up on that. Any discussion on this ordinance? This is an accounting ordinance primarily. If there's no, um, discussion, Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. The last item is an ordinance, um, adopting a revised employee handbook, making a series of small changes, uh, the employee handbook and personnel policy. I'm going to ask, um, Ms. Maybe Williams to step forward and probably going to be supplemented by our city attorney, Mr. Clausen, on that. But it's a, a number of things. The first one was we had, uh, circumstance come up that we had, we needed to discuss teleworking. We had no clear guidance in our employee manual. We decided to put a teleworking provision in there, you know, so we can allow it under certain conditions. Um, that's what, it's not highlighted in yellow, but that is a entirely new section under teleworking. Um, and then the others, terms of form of government, family medical leave, uh, leave of absence without pay and attendance are all just updates that kind of housecleaning we needed to get done. Um, Ms. Maybe Williams, you want to visit about any of those in particular?
Um, the telecommu, working policy, uh, we researched, we looked at several other cities' policies. Not many had them yet. Um, but we, with the help of our city attorney, this is the policy that we came up with that we think will cover us when issues arise, that we don't have a policy to follow up. All of the other changes are, are very minor. Uh, we added the district, um, court judges. We changed that to district rather than municipal, uh, family medical leave. We added the section about covered service members. It's already the law, we just added it to our policy. Uh, leave of absence without pay, we just clarified it. We added a sentence to that policy. And on attendance, we added two sentences to clarify those two policies, not major changes at all.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second...
Have we waived the readings yet?
No, no, we haven't.
I make a motion to waive the readings.
Thank you. Motion and second to waive the readings. All in favor of waiving the readings and bringing forward for action on tonight's agenda, signify to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero and the ordinance is perforce. It'll be Ordinance O. sixteen...
One oh five.
One oh five.
For adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Discussion? The teleworking, we were going to emphasize it be limited, very limited, uh, under extenuating circumstances and for a specific temporary time. So it's, it's, it's not something that's a permanent status that someone can just stay in their homes and work. Well, it's just, it's very, we want to be as tightly controlled as possible. Any other discussion?
Under the attendance section, the word excessive is used, uh, without any numbers being given. I mean, is two excessive? Is twelve excessive? Is twenty-three excessive?
Depends on the time period the attendance problem occurs during...
I think that needs to, I think that really needs to be...
More clarified.
Yeah, more defined, more well-defined. So there's no question.
That would, that would be beyond the scope of this particular change. And we could come back to you with some recommendations based on practices around the state.
Okay.
We can go, we can go investigate that, but that's...
I'd like to, I'd like to have something more concrete than just the word excessive because that's...
There are going to be other changes probably coming with the handbook, some of the other things we need to address. Then we'll just put that on the list.
That's good because excessive and, uh, I mean, that's just a, that's a real nebulous term.
Very good. We'll take that in, in advisement. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion? We'll call the vote and then I'll have, uh, Ms. Maybe Williams talk to us briefly about health, the health care and, and the health insurance coming up this, this year. Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
You just mentioned everybody else.
Okay, that passes eight to zero.
Thank you. I wanted to give, please. I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the municipal health benefit fund. Uh, at the end of June, our loss ratio was a hundred and forty-five percent. At the end of August, as of August thirty-first, it is a hundred and forty-three percent. This means that we will be looking at an additional increase for two thousand seventeen. It could go up as much as ten or twenty percent. Um, the only way we could offset that much of an increase would be to raise our deductibles. And as many of you are already aware, the way the deductibles work with the municipal league, our employees already have to hit that five hundred dollar deductible before it'll pay for a lot of things that a doctor does in his office. So it would be very hard on our employees to raise the deductible at this point.
I'll point out that we got, got some really low rates from the municipal league when we switched over from Blue Cross Blue Shield. It was going to be a very substantial rate increase. We actually went down from their former rate by taking the Arkansas Municipal League and its less rich insurance package.
Correct.
But we were sitting on about a million dollar cushion of premiums paid previously that we're still working to our good. With our loss ratios the past couple of years, we've eaten that away. And so our protection against higher premiums has gone away and there's no wiggle room in our system. We could go out to bid on this if you would like, because we, we're going to get a substantial rate increase, but with going into any private sector insurance provider, we're not going to have a cushion, a reserve in place. And they're going to look at our last two years, because last year wasn't any good either. Um, you know, history and you other people are in the business more than I am, we can expect probably even something more staggering than twenty percent.
Correct.
And we can go on and do that and check it, go out for bids, but that's probably going to be the result.
We put it out for bid last year, no one would bid on us.
Yeah.
Because of our loss ratio.
So, without any other direction, we'll proceed, uh, and just see what comes down the pipe.
We won't have the final figures till the end of October, but I was going to let you know what was coming.
I can't see any better.
Okay. That's all the business I have?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned.
Thank you.[1779.51]